This conference will now be recorded.
Going to call to order the Tuesday, February 13th, 2024 meeting of the Tilton Planning Board. And first, our agenda is a continuation of a public hearing, its completeness and site plan review for GTM Landscaping and Renovations LLC. And I have a baby seat, but she still can't see me. 142 East Main in the Mixed Use District, the proposal for an auto repair shop in the existing business with a maximum of five vehicles at one time. And I believe we have paperwork in front of us.
Yep, and I think Mr.
And Mr. Pellerin is here.
Say I'll make a motion to bring the application to the floor for review. Just a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Yeah.
Now make a motion to accept the application as complete.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Do you want me to give a little review? So this came to the zoning board a few months ago. It was approved by the zoning board with some conditions, including limiting to five cars that he go before conservation, that he do some landscaping along Morrison, and he do no auto body work. So which I believe he's acknowledged. I know Mr. Pellerin is here to speak to that if you want him to answer questions or review his plan.
One.
Yeah.
You guys hear me? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you just state your name for the recording?
Francois Pellerin. I own the building at 142 East Main Street, Tilton. What I'd like to do, I know the, there were some suggestions, some suggestions made about an oil-water separator. I believe you guys got some literature on that today from DES. Did you guys get that? No?
Yeah, they have it on there. Yep.
Is it on you?
Yep.
Yeah.
You should have three pages. One is an email from the director at DES with a recommendation. Yep. And then best management practices and the code for drains and oil separators. So Francois, you can either speak to it or, yeah.
Yeah. Essentially, DES does not require floor oil-water separators. And if there was any drains, they want it sealed. And that was already done when I occupied the building in 2019.
Correct. That was actually a requirement.
There was a requirement from the town to seal anything I had, and that was done. The other thing I'd like to speak to is I have no problem with Morrison Ave landscaping it. That's what, you know, that's what we do on the landscaping side. So if, you know, putting a screen in there, sure, we can make it look nice in terms of, you know, some deciduous or evergreens, you know, what, you know? No problem. Happy to do that. There was a, they did ask if we could put something in the back of the lot. I think that came from. Second ever here, sorry.
Was that from conservation?
Yeah, from conservation, sorry.
You have their notes as well. I gave you that.
They asked about maybe putting some, you know, screens in the back. I do put snow there from the lot. So in terms of like the likelihood of it surviving, just, you know what I mean, where you push snow sometimes. So I already have natural trees and different plants growing along the railroad. So putting, there's like one area that's like an eight-foot wide area that I see right now, there's nothing. I don't see the point of doing it, you know, personally. I just, they asked, you know, if I'd consider it. I, I looked at the space and I'm like, you know what I mean? I'd rather make the Morrison Ave look nice, you know what I mean, than, I mean, so just like to just throw that out, you know what I mean? But and then as far as like parking, I have asphalt I can park vehicles on. I have gravel. I do have a mat that can be used on the outside as well. So if people are concerned about oil leaking from a car, which I have employees that park there too. And honestly, when, when they pull in, if we see something, we put something under their car. I've had two employees work for me, you know, I don't like to see a drip on the pavement over time. It could ruin the pavement anyways, right? So they do make bigger mats. I know we talked about the pig mat, that's what it's called. The, and someone, I think we were, John, we were talking about, it was like a three by 120 linear feet. We're like, how does that do anything? Well, I have an eight by whatever length I want, so eight feet wide, 120 linear feet. You can cut it to fit. You can fit it under a truck and a car, and it'll absorb everything. So I'm very cautious about the environment, you know what I mean? We, we work outside in terms of the landscaping business end, so we're very mindful of that stuff anyways. You know, and obviously the automotive end, we'd apply the same because it's all within the same, you know, ownership, so. So I have that. Yeah, I mean, I have plenty of parking there for the five cars at one time, if it reaches out. Yeah. I mean, that's what I have so far. Do you guys have anything for me? I mentioned too that we get rid of all our waste oil from, to Bouchain's Auto in Franklin. So we just, we would drum anything that we had. We're not doing oil changes there. That's not what we're doing. You know what I mean? Like we're not a Valvoline. That's not what we're looking to accomplish over there. So this is a minor, minor auto, automotive.
Chairman. But, um. Do you have a place that you go set aside for any drums or, you know, of oil? And what I was going to suggest is that you have a place undercover with secondary containment for any drums of liquids. I mean, I think it could be outside if you just had like a shed type thing where it's in there and have one of those containers. So if it did leak, because, you know, I, I can say that his, his lot there, being a neighbor, he keeps it neat as pen. It's always, every vehicle's lined up perfectly straight. Everything's nice and clean and everything. So, you know, it's a, he's very conscientious. But for your own sake, if something did leak, you know how expensive that would be? So if you had it drums in it with the secondary containment and undercover so that it, nothing would, you know, for your own sake.
Yeah.
If you set something up.
What we kind of put in, talked about, put in places, right? We have like a drum inside, and when it's full, it gets emptied. And that's it. So and it's, it's, you know, it's not like, you know, we're not, we're not like a Valvoline, so it's not going to be like we're going to have a drum filled a day, you know what I mean?
Would you set that up with the secondary containment so that if the drum leaked, it would?
Yes.
They have those poly things.
Yes, absolutely. A hundred percent. Yeah, that's what.
You wouldn't want to do that anywhere.
A hun, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course. So, yeah, no, those precautions, I mean, we have fire extinguishers all over the place too, but, you know, I'm just talking a lot, you know, we, you know, we, we're really, you know, I've thought about it because I don't want to do anything that's going to just, you know, contradict anything else I'm doing. So I'm, you know, I made sure that things could be done appropriately, you know, for sure. But yes, yes, a hundred percent.
Good question.
Yes.
You, you said that you're taking, you're taking the oil yourself to Franklin?
Yeah.
So I'm just curious about the, is this like average Joe going to be putting this in the back of his pickup truck and trucking it down to Franklin? Or is this going to be professionally done where, you know, if that barrel dips over?
Yeah.
It's, you know, I mean, you're, you're, you're traveling from here, from there to Franklin, you're, you're going along some pristine environmental areas. And I would hate for something to do. And I didn't know if one, you had a company that comes and empties it, or two, I know many garages have, they burn their used oil in their heating system or furnace.
Oil heaters, yeah.
Yeah. And I didn't know if that was something that you had or were, were thinking of. I, I mean, I don't, I mean, some places they get so much oil, they can't, they can't burn it fast enough. I mean, you can set it to 80 and all winter, and they still don't go through all the.
Right. No, I'm not considering doing a waste oil heater over there. We have like, for example, because we get mowers that we take care of, so we've put them in five gallon buckets with lids, and we brought it to them. And you know what I mean? So that's okay too. So we've disposed of it that way. Again, we don't foresee over, you know, we're doing light automotive work, you know what I mean? So we're not, you know, we're, we're not taking collisions in, right? A car comes in or anything like that with oil, like that's, that's, that's auto body, right? That's all tied into all that. So it's going to be very controlled. And in terms of disposing it, if I had to, sure, we'd have a company come and grab them and pick them up. We do have machines there. If we had to load it up and strap it down to a vehicle, you know what I mean, in our trucks. But what we've done in the past so far is we, we put, you know, five gallon buckets with screw lids, and then we brought it to them like that. That's how we prefers it to come to them. I assume it's easier.
You've been very conscientious in the landscaping business because you've been in the CS several times on that.
Yes.
For protecting the environment.
Absolutely.
I would assume you would do the same with the oil.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Couple of questions. Right here on this picture you provided, what is this thing down here with this little semicircle in it?
That's the salt bin that we have.
You have a salt bin?
Yep.
They're a landscaping business.
I understand that. Is that completely contained?
Yep.
Oh, okay. And the other thing too is about customer parking. You want eight parking spaces?
We have already about, I think, eight parking spaces.
And you want five for your employees?
Well, that would vary. It could be from four to five, so.
But how many do you want?
Well.
Well, you've got five listed here.
On the paving footprint?
Yep.
Like right now, we occupy most of those spaces minus one or two. My employees from GTM, you know, like say we got a new car in that need to have some work on. We can either put them on the pavement, or they could be put on the gravel.
Okay, just on the gravel.
Yes. There's a line, if you see it on the, on the map.
I see it, gravel.
Marks the.
Yep, okay. The other thing too is that concerns me is that you have one repair bay. Is that what you're, is that what you're looking for, is one repair bay?
Yeah.
And the other bay is for your landscape business?
Yeah.
Okay. What's, what's going to happen when you start to get busy in the landscape business?
In terms of?
In terms of your auto repair business?
Well, I have a guy that would take care of the auto.
So you have, you have a designated employee for the, for the repair business?
Yes.
Okay. Are you going to be selling tires?
No.
Okay. You're going to be doing engine swaps?
No, we're not, we're not doing, you know, would he do a motor? Ah, you know, he can, but you know, we're not doing, you know, we're doing anything automotively, but we're not doing like, we're not selling tires. I'm not going to be selling things on the side to do with that business. We're just doing repairs. I mean, obviously people would buy like a starter, right? If they needed a new starter, put in their vehicle or battery, we would pick it up and we'd install it.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's my understanding you, you wanted this to carry you through the winter because in winter, you don't have a lot of landscaping work.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, so it's not a full-blown.
No.
Repair.
Exactly. Correct. That's why I was perfectly happy with containing it to five and all that jazz because it's not, yeah. And we have an image too that we're trying to reflect over there.
Absolutely.
So we're not looking to make it look like, it's not going to look like anything bad. It's not going to look like a junkyard. I'm, you know, absolutely not like I.
You know, I'm just asking questions.
Yeah, no, I get it.
And so your, your, butters are okay with everything?
Yeah, yeah. Neighbors are very friendly and nice and, you know, we take care of one of the guy's lawn next door. We just do it because it's, if we about the lawn, my guys just cut it. We, we try to do whatever we can for the, you know, whoever's, you know, surrounding us.
And, and you're okay with no more than five vehicles at one time?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You know, repair vehicles. That's, you know.
Yeah, repaired vehicles. Yeah. What I'm concerned about is unregistered vehicles being in your yard, and I, I think, I don't think you're into that, are you?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
I guess my, my only question is, will all the vehicles be driving there under their own power? Or do you anticipate having like a lot of tow truck and flatbed activity?
I don't anticipate that. A lot of the, like, it, it's really hard to say, like, you know, some people get a tow because their battery's dead, right? But we're talking about actually doing a mobile unit too. So like if it was something like that, my guy down the road could just go to them versus, you know, coming up and jamming our area up. You know what I mean? So we're, we're going to be very conscientious about the whole thing. We're not, you know, you know, it's, it's hard to tell. I don't anticipate that though, no, but, you know, you never know. I, I know this, we will not accept anything that had, that was in an accident. So wintertime, something got hit, it's not coming into my place. I don't care if it's fender crash, I'm not touching it. Where, that we will not touch it. You know, we're not doing those repairs, like, you know, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Okay.
No, I'm good.
No, just if you could not plow the snow up by the sign, up by Morrison Ave so that, and that's, that's the only thing.
We've, I think you've noticed this year, we, we have to push snow there for the top lot, but we made sure it was like no higher than like four or five feet. So especially by my, the sign, so when you're coming up the intersection, you can look, trust me.
Down further back, so.
We want to look too and see, and, you know, and we understand the whole, you know, I know you mentioned them before, so.
It's been good.
Yeah, we haven't done that, and that's something I tell my drivers too. I said, A, I don't want to block the sign. I don't want to block any entry, just like we'd treat any property we're plowing for. We wouldn't make a barricade where people trying to creep out. I did make a note of it though, and they all know.
Just curious, like, do you have a skid steer on site?
Yes.
Then you could potentially move the snow to the back in your downtime.
That's what we did. Yep. That's why that spot that someone asked for some plantings in the back, I'll take that snow and I'll bring it all the way down there and push it. So, you know.
Okay.
I have no questions. I just want to say that I know when you came to us before with the landscaping business, we had a lot of requirements, and we had a lot of questions and a lot of concerns. And I think you've lived up to all the things that you said you would do, and it, it always looks very nice. And I go, I have a post office box, so I'm in that area a lot, and I've never seen anything out of line. It, it always looks very presentable and.
Yeah. You're a good neighbor.
We're always going to add to it, you know what I mean? We're right up front on the main road, so we'll always be enhancing the property and doing different things like that.
And we have a watchdog at the end of the table who will.
Always need, always need down there.
Are there any other questions or comments? Oh, entertain the approval.
Some, I guess, just a couple of, uh.
Don't we need to discuss the recommendations or?
I'm going to say that fluid containers have a secondary confinement and undercover from elements. And you, you understand that.
And I believe storing them inside the garage would cover all of those, correct?
Sometimes people do put sheds, like, you know, on the outside that are covered.
Or an overhang.
Or overhang, but.
Which I have one onsite.
Yeah, you know, protected from the environment, and that's where I was saying, and covered from the elements. And a spill kit kept on site. I think that's, so that would just be something that would be listed on there. Those are the only two things that I had.
And, and then you, you still have no need for a dumpster, and if you do, you see what the requirements would be for that.
Yeah, and I agree with that a hundred percent.
Good.
I'll entertain.
I guess there's one more question because ZBA, I think they put on there that they have to have floor drains. But can we say that in light of?
Well, in light of the requirements.
The requirements at DS and that the spill kit is sufficient. So that, I think we, we can do that if.
Yeah.
Because it's usually, we're the ones that do that anyway.
And the wording on the zoning condition says require a fuel water separator for each bay or the equivalent. So the equivalent would be no drains, which is preferred by DES.
In a spill kit as opposed to that.
All right.
Okay, so I'll make a motion. We approve the application and the, the plan with the following exceptions, that fluid containers have a secondary containment and stored undercover from elements. And that there is a spill kit that's kept on site in lieu of the oil-water separator in the back.
I'd like the note, the minutes to reflect also the ruling from DES that we have. That would explain for any future.
Is that already part of CBA, the no auto body?
No. No auto body.
Yeah, that's DBA.
It's on the. And five vehicles.
I didn't know if we had a list separately, sorry.
That would be my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote.
Go forth and repair.
Go forth and repair. You're welcome.
Next.
And our next case.
Next victim.
Our next case is a, a public hearing for the site plan review for Farmland Real Estate LLC. At 549 West Main Street. And I have a letter from the owner, Kevin Hutchinson, requesting that he's required to meet with the conservation board, and they're scheduled for next Monday. So he would like to have this continued until that time, after he meets with conservation. Is there a motion to let her back?
Motion to postpone till after the conservation meeting.
Second.
Again, I just state the data, so to continue to a date certain of February 27.
27.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote. Okay. Okay.
So we can hang on to these, so you don't have to send them out again.
I. I would appreciate that.
Yeah, probably not gonna happen.
Hold on, John.
That's five forty nine, alright. I'll just put it in my little folder right here.
Bring your little folder, you'll get it back.
Man, uh, do you want this continuation back?
Yeah, I wanna put that in the file.
Like this little folder, see?
And the last case for the evening is a change of use, site plan review for one eighty-five Laconia Road, regional commercial. And it's to change it from an auto dealership to office space and vehicle and truck parking. And I believe you have.
In front of the Hampton Inn, there's that little red and white building.
So this is the property that's, yeah, next to the Hampton Inn. It used to be owned by, uh, New Car and before New Car.
Ice cream shop.
Yes, yes. Um, which it's gone, I think that ice cream building is gone. So that's been vacant for a while. Um, Mr. Athanas purchased the property and he is leasing it to a tree service company that does, uh, that does tree service in the area. So they'll be parking trucks. We did have a site plan on file, so he did a amended site plan and a change of use. Gonna use that as office space and his son is here to speak to the application when you're ready.
I make a motion to bring the application, the case PB twenty-four dash O two.
There's second?
Second.
Aye.
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 Alright.
So you have his marked up plan, but if anybody wants a copy of the original, I have it here. I can bring it up to the table if you wanna see what it looked like before.
This is by the, uh, the sandwich place.
Yeah.
Right before the like Lechance filter or, okay.
There we go. That's before.
John mentioned the ice cream. That's the original existing.
Oh, oh, it's a little different, yeah, here I can.
Use this plan.
Oh, okay.
So are, are both buildings gonna be office space, I guess?
I guess, um, when you find, I guess you're gonna bring that patient forward and then.
Yeah, we gotta.
I guess you can ask.
We have a driveway permit.
Hang on a second.
You have a copy of driveway permit, right?
What's that? The whole thing is wide open.
What?
I'm looking at the proposed plan information required. It says proposed parking spaces and loading spaces, NA. All these things say NA. Those are the existing. Just, I mean, adding a couple where the ice cream was.
And there are lines.
Yeah.
Where the parking spots and the ice cream spot, probably went over it when they did this maybe? There's already.
Yeah. It's not really different.
What's the address? On the side. On the five. I'm just pulling up on my desk.
It appears fairly complete. Making both people accept the, uh, application.
Moved.
You're sticking it.
I'll second it, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Hello, good evening. Uh, Alex Athanas, I'm the son of the owner. I'm here representing the landlord. Um, and yeah, as you can see, we're looking to put a tenant here, uh, Enviro, Enviro Arbor Solutions. Basically, you know, they just do tree removals, um, particularly for emergency situations for like power companies and things like that. Uh, they'll be using the site for offices and then just storing their vehicles. I heard, um, someone ask whether they're gonna be using both buildings for offices. Um, as far as I know, I think they're just using the front building and, and for the most part, just the front part of the property. Uh, the back, they're not even really gonna be touching it, um, aside from maybe some snow storage.
How many vehicles are you gonna be parking there?
So from my, my understanding, they're gonna be parking approximately thirty vehicles. Uh, and they, you know, as you can see on the map, there's a lot more than thirty spaces, so there's ample parking, um, for, for their use.
What kind of vehicle is it?
It's, it's, it's a mixture of trucks. Um, you know, they're gonna have some of the tree removal trucks with the little cranes on back, um, and then just employee vehicles.
Bucket trucks.
Yeah, like bucket trucks, exactly. I, I, I'm not representing the business, I just can give you as far, you know, as I understand, um, but yeah, bucket trucks and employee vehicles.
You're gonna need. Yeah, I have, you, you're gonna be using, they're gonna be using that back pot. I mean, if you have thirty vehicles with, let's say, two people per truck, which would be at least a, a crew. That's sixty vehicles plus your thirty trucks, that's ninety vehicles that you need to park on that lot.
Um, well, at least according to the application, it seems like they're only planning on having between one and eleven employees at any given time. Um, but. In case, in the case of an emergency situation, you might, you know, it might, they might need more, you might be right on that situation.
Is, is the, the thirty vehicles inclusive of like employee?
Yes, yes, inclusive, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's not thirty free trucks?
No, no, no.
Got it.
Good, that's verified.
Okay, cause it, it, it looks like there are thirty spaces just around the building and then the, the vehicle parking.
My fourth grade maths says there's fifty-eight parking spaces.
Yeah, there's plenty of parking.
That's a lot of parking spaces.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a relatively large.
Yeah, and it's all paved and everything, so.
Is there any retail business gonna be conducted out of this?
Nope.
Nothing at all?
No.
No people coming and going, traffic?
As far as I understand, nope, nope, nope. It's just an office they're gonna be using for dispatching the trucks and taking calls.
Okay, that was a concern of mine.
Yep.
Even down the road. Sometime.
Right, yeah, I know, there are no plans for that as far as I know.
I'd say you have the employee parking marked off on this too, so.
Yep.
Uh, they also already have DOT approval, that should be, I think that went out with.
Yeah, the site's not changing much, you know, actually pretty much not at all, so.
Okay. I went by there today and I saw the boom trucks.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yep, exactly, that's what they're gonna be having there, yep.
Now, that. These, these trucks, they're gonna, do they have a schedule or do they just do emergency work?
Um, I think it's more so just emergency work.
I see.
As far as I understand, yeah.
Yeah, so they're contracted by people to do stuff like that?
Yep.
Municipalities and private people?
Right, yep, utility companies.
Yep. Okay.
What's the other building out back?
I was just gonna ask the same thing.
Uh, I think it's just gonna be, at least for the foreseeable future, just vacant. It was being used, uh, New Car was using it a little bit for some storage and stuff.
So I guess, are, are you leasing the, uh, the tree service, the entire property and, and both buildings? Or are you just leasing them, the, the main building and the, the parking?
Uh, we're leasing them the entire property, I just don't think they're gonna be using, or they have no use for the back building. Or even really, you know, they're, they don't have enough cars to even fill up the back, you know, so. It's pretty much, at least, you know, from what I see on the plan, they're just gonna put in some snow there and that's it for now.
Are you gonna be occupying any of that space in the front building?
No.
Oh.
You mean, me personally?
Well, you of, or the, or the company that you're representing.
No, no, we're just landlords.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, good.
What about, what about storage of, um, wood chips and, um. I don't wanna say lumber, but tree trunks and things like that, I mean.
I don't think it's any of that's happening onsite.
You don't think?
Yeah, I, but I can't, I can't, I can't tell you, uh, definitely, I, I just don't know, but.
I see tree companies all the time and they have.
Hmm.
They store wood chips onsite.
Right.
Store, you know, they cut down some nice tree trunks, they either truck them or the, you know, or they store them. And then they have a bigger logging company come.
Right, well, uh, you know, as we talked about, there's a lot of space out back. I don't know if that is the plan, uh, from what I understand, it's not, but I, I guess there is available space if.
I thought you were, you were renting the trucks or renting the truck out to be used, or do you own the truck?
No, I just don't, we own the property. I'm not representing the business owner or the business at all. I'm just trying to speak to what my understanding is of the business.
Yeah, I believe the owner is just leasing out.
Yeah.
The property to a tree company.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, you know, I was hoping that I could have somebody from the business here today, but they weren't available. So I'm just trying to do my best to answer your questions.
What about, what about repairs to the trucks?
Nope, as far as I understand, none of that's happening.
You keep saying, as far as your understanding, I would hope as a landlord that you know what's gonna happen on your property.
What I was told is that will not be happening. That's what the tenant told me.
Well, I, I'm, I'm a little concerned that number one, a representative, representative of that company is not here to answer our questions. And you keep saying to us, I understand, I'm not comfortable with, I understand, I'd rather you know or you don't know.
I don't know if this is possible, but, I mean, could I get a representative of the company on the phone or would that help?
We could put conditions on it.
Or conditions, okay, okay.
Or we can continue it.
Yeah, we could put conditions in if they don't meet and you can come in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, uh.
Alter, yeah.
Right?
We're not trying to put you on.
So we put no vehicle.
No, I understand and I know it was, it might have been, you know, there's might have been some questions asked that I can't give you guys answers to and I was worried about that, so I was trying to get them here, but.
I mean, you can certainly put conditions, um, you know, about having storage of wood and chips. You can have no vehicle repair. You can, and then if for some reason that company ever wants to come in for a change, they'll have to come in for an amendment to those conditions.
Yeah. Yep. That works for me.
So I'm, I'm, I'm assuming in the actual lease, there is no language prohibiting repairs of, you know, fleet vehicles on the property or storage of materials?
I believe there is language that does prohibit that, but I would have to double check.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, when I spoke to, um, Alex's dad, who was the owner, he didn't indicate that there'd be any that, anything to do with any storage or repairs or that they were simply gonna be parking their trucks there and dispatching their workers, usually during emergency times from that facility, that it was not really a working facility for this company as much as a parking for the vehicles and, and dispatched in and out. That's how it was represented as a business to me. So, yeah, conditions could be put.
Still about that, putting conditions on, or would you prefer to continue it until the?
I.
Person who's gonna be leasing can be here.
Put conditions.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with, with conditions. I mean, we could, we could potentially request a, a copy of the lease. I'm, I'm not sure if that's.
The plan doesn't indicate any storage material out.
As long as we've put conditions on it.
Yeah.
You, you wouldn't be able to do, or they wouldn't be able to do it unless you guys said, hey, you know, we wanna do this, the seller gonna do it. You'd come back to us to amend that.
Correct.
Right.
And then that condition could be removed or amended.
Yep, yep, and as I said, I was told that that wouldn't be happening, so it shouldn't be an issue at all.
Expansion of use, it would just be an expansion if they start a repair and a storing material.
So, no, no repairs?
ADA compliance on their, uh, parking lot.
EPA?
ADA.
Oh, okay. Well, what?
You need to have ADA parking.
Yeah, a couple sites up by the building.
Uh, it's not, I don't know, I can't, I can't read that, maybe it is.
You also have some public.
No, I know, I'm gonna get to them around. No, no storage of, um. Wood chips.
Maybe just no storage of?
Wood products?
Materials?
Wood products.
Wood products.
Buying any materials, anything.
I think that covers just no repairs, no ADA.
I would actually say no material storage or processing, so you don't want them chipping over there or anything like that, right? So no processing or storage of any material.
Yeah, they, they should be taking stuff from customers' site to where it's going to have it disposed and then.
Good, good.
All right, I'm gonna open this to the public because I think we have some, uh, butters here. Is it public, have any comments to make?
Did you wanna speak? Yeah. They ask if the public, we can use this.
Identify yourself, please.
Yeah, my name is Chitram. I'm the representative, uh, from the owners for the Hampton Inn and Suites, the next lot, uh, to the property.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we just wanna clarify a couple of things. Uh, so this lease is, is just a temporary, short term or, uh, or is it's kind of a long term lease?
Uh, long term.
How many years of lease, yeah, the initial term?
I think it's, it's five years with some extensions, so.
How about those trucks? I, I, I'm, I'm not sure if you can answer it or no. Are those truck gonna be, they're gonna be keep running during the nighttime, uh, so.
Are they gonna be running during the nighttime, like going out, being dispatched?
No, not just a dispatch, because sometimes, sometimes if it's a diesel engine, they keep running the truck overnight.
Oh, okay.
So it creates a noise pollution.
Right.
And the fumes as well, so we just wanna make sure, we want to know, we want to clarify that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I can't rea, I can't really answer that because I'm not the business operators, but I would guess no, but I just can't tell you that.
And, uh, there is a office setup for them to use, the office setup?
Yep.
Are there any facilities for the truck drivers, uh, like a rest room or, uh, to relax or, uh, any setup there or?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
I just know if there's any, um, restrooms and facilities, uh, eating facilities in the office, like are they gonna be using that as a break room? Is there a bathroom?
Oh, okay, I, I would assume yes. I mean, there's definitely a ba, I know there's a restroom and I would assume they're gonna put a small kitchen, some, some sort of break room.
Because we already saw few drivers coming across the parking lot, coming to our hotel, so that was our main concern, uh, if there is no.
To use your restrooms?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, no, no.
And the breakfast tour.
And eat the breakfast.
That's.
I never thought.
What a great idea!
They just climb. Because in the winter, the, all those brushes are, uh, you know, they dried up, they are dead, so you can easily climb up there.
Right.
Walk across the parking lot and we usually think it's the guest because they park around the hotel, so.
Right.
But I personally, when I pulled in around seven thirty, I saw them climb up. Our guest wouldn't just go down for no reason, but there were those trucks, we noticed, so.
I mean, it's something I can definitely speak to them about, I don't know, uh, would be, you could do to really prevent them other than that, but.
Will there be any, uh, fencing around in a place or you?
I don't believe so, I don't believe there was any plans for that. Is that something you would prefer?
It might stop them just to climb, climb up probably.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there was any plans for that, but. I'll de, I'll definitely mention it to them that, you know, obviously you, you came to this meeting and on record saying, you know, you don't want them over there stealing breakfast and all that stuff. I'll definitely mention that to them.
We don't mind helping w- once in a while, but if it become trend, yeah, and then, you know, you just have to rent a room, we don't mind, we welcome everyone to our hotel, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I understand, yeah.
And, uh, any, uh, do this office, uh, hours, is it twenty-four seven available for them? Or there would be certain hours, uh, it will be closed or?
Yeah, on a, any given normal day, they do have business hours. I thi-, I believe they're on the, um, application. I believe it's five, uh, AM to eleven PM, but during situations of emergencies, you know, big snowstorms, things like that, they're possibly are gonna have to be staying overnight and dispatching trucks all night. So it is something that might occur every now and again.
Yep, it's, uh.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, no problem.
I'll take that.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna close it to public then. I have no repairs, ADA parking compliance. No storage of wood products or no processing of wood products. Do you think of anything else?
Just before, they won't hear you if you.
I also notice, you know, those buckets on a truck, they leave it, uh, high, uh, almost about thirty, forty feet high. They don't bring it down. So it kind of unpleasant sight as you, as you, you know, drive by on a root tree.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there's any reason, any, you know, strategy behind that, but that's something I can mention to them as well.
Yeah, because, uh, when they travel on the road, they have to put, they have to bring it down, and if there are forty trucks, uh, all of them have truck, uh, uh, there's bucket truck up in the air. It's not gonna be pleasant sight, you know?
I'm not sure the reason for that, maybe advertising, but I can speak to them, you know, I'm keeping those down.
Okay, thanks.
I never thought of that either, but I, I don't think I've ever seen that.
It's generally.
I don't know why they would do that. It seems like it's something that could damage the truck, but I don't know.
Something that, um, if they're hydraulic.
Yeah, right.
They leave, they wanna leave the hydraulic cylinders filled instead of emptied. So that when, i- in the, if they're emptied when they start up in the morning, it has, especially during cold weather, has a difficult time getting, getting through to the seals to, they have to get that warmed up. They have to get that piston and that, uh, uh, case around the piston warm, or it just won't function. There's, if it won't function and it's blocked, you'll blow the seal. And you may blow the lines, so that's why they keep them elevated. There's other ways of doing it. They can extend them. That, that, uh, that, it takes up more room.
Right.
But it serves the same function. Sometimes they extend them both this way, so that they could, uh, they pack one nose to tail like that. It's just the way they do things. They have a, they have a, in order to, um, get a DOT certificate, every day when they get into that truck, they have to do a pre-trip check and a post-trip check. So they have to have all of the functions going. They check the air in the tires, they check the brakes, they check the air in the air tanks, if they have them. And they check the hydraulics. All that other stuff has to be checked before they start, before they move the truck and has to be signed off by the driver. So, just to let you know, that's just a point of information.
I have four conditions. Any others?
Um, uh, is there anything about signage? It's just could be per, uh, ordinance?
Yeah, they're keeping the same sign, just changing like the logo. No, no changes.
Ordinance, whatever, uh, the ordinance for the signage, it's listed in there.
Yeah, we'll just put a, um, we almost always put a statement on, on the conditions that they meet all local and state permit requirements. That kinda covers it all.
Fuel or storage, no fuel or stor-, uh, oil storage on premises. Twenty-four hour restrooms available when they're open, you know, some.
Maintain the office for use of, I put that down.
Okay. And, um, the, there's a lot of wildlife out through there, so we always require people to fence in the dumpster.
Okay.
Yeah, just, and keep it closed at all times.
Okay.
Well, I think you got. I think that you're gonna want that because of what's located next door. There's, I mean, I would almost suggest that you put a fence up on the western side, just because it's a.
Parking ride.
Does park, I don't know about ride.
It's like ringing a dinner bell.
Parking sleep.
What about lighting? Is there gonna be any lighting in, at night?
Um, I, I assume yes, there's gonna be some lighting, um. That would most likely, you know, go off when they close at eleven PM, but yeah, I think they, they need to have the parking lot illuminated.
Well, are they gonna install any new lighting? Because if there's new lighting, it needs to be on the plan.
No, they're not doing anything as far as new lighting, just using the existing.
All right, did you get all the conditions and we, anything else?
Is any like landscaping being done, um, as, as part of like the, the updates to the property to your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge. I would assume maybe they do some light stuff just to make it pretty it up a little bit, but that's just whatever the tenant wants to do there.
Asphalt.
Yeah, there's not much there.
Maybe some weeds that grow up in the cracks. I, I, I still have concerns that the, the company is not here. I, I, I appreciate you being here, but I'm just not comfortable with answers and it comes back to bite us in the butt.
So I, I guess, what, what, what are you concerned about them doing?
He's not certain on a lot of things and.
Did we cover the things that he's not certain on under our conditions? I think we did.
But what happens if this guy has, you know, I, I, alright, so I've said my P, I just.
Any, yeah, anything that's, doesn't meet the conditions and a violation. Then you gotta take care of it.
Right, it's, of course, yeah, um, yeah.
So, um, do we have an ordinance that covers idling of, uh, vehicles? I'm not sure. You know, should we put something, no idling of, um?
I, I don't remember ever seeing anything pertaining to idling other than if it were to fall under noise. We did have that little issue with the buses that were idling by, um, by the, by Judy's. That was a little bit of concern, but it was more, um.
Was fumes.
It was fumes more than, um, noise, so we don't have anything specific, but the, the ordinance does say any noise nuisance.
Nuisance things, yeah, so that would cover.
Fumes would be under that, yeah.
Vehicles wouldn't be sitting for an hour idling outside the.
I don't think that, I, I, if they're storing them there, I don't think they'll be idling them anyway.
Sometimes if it's.
In the morning.
In the morning, to leave.
If there's a winter storm and the guys are hanging out, waiting for stuff and just leave it running for an hour or something, I think that's what his concern is, is that the fumes drift over and the noise to the, would make some of the rooms in the, uh, in there, um, nuts, so, um, wanting to be stayed in.
But you're gonna have, you're gonna have trucks with their back, backup alarm system, you know? As they move the trucks. I, I work in an environment that we have a yard and the, the trucks idle. I mean, it smells like the diesel yard. When the trucks are all there and they're all idling in the morning because they're warming up because diesel trucks warm up differently than a regular, um, regular gasoline vehicle. Um, and.
Picture that's, you're located on the easterly side of, um, that, right?
He's downwind.
So, on the plan here, okay, this is, uh, three eleven, so you're over here.
Correct.
And is this where the trucks are on this side?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And down the back.
And down here? Cause they're not gonna be parking down there.
Uh, they are now.
So I guess, are the, the property itself, are they parked on the west side parking area next to the parking? And, uh, go, or are they parking the vehicles on the?
Yeah, it's gonna be like next to the par-, the parking ride and, yeah, down here where the parking gravel, uh, where those words are, that area. So, yeah, next to the parking ride is where the truck are gonna be parked. And then the top right near the hotel is for the employee vehicles.
Yes, that's better. You won't have the trucks on that side.
But he's down.
I know they're, they're currently, they do have maybe like one or two where the employee park, but they're not really, they're not parking employees there right now. They're just, they just have some vehicles on site.
But they're parking in the back. She just said it. Are they parking in the back?
Yeah, in the back, do you mean down here? Oh, okay. Maybe that's just a temporary.
He said earlier this evening that he wasn't sure, but it, we have in a butter that's telling us that they are parking there.
Parking will only be in designated areas that are shown on the plan.
So the plan does show vehicle and truck storage, um, only on the, uh, western section that is paved.
The big plants.
And then, uh, gravel, um. Maybe you wanna put some kind of barrier between like the corner of the lot and that, that outbuilding? Just so they can't get into that, um, dirt area at the far back end.
Right, right, I understand. Yeah, I was told that they would not be using that area. Um, I, I'm guessing it's just a temporary thing right now, but.
We have to put that there.
As the landlord though, you can.
Yeah, yeah, I can, for sure, yeah.
Physically prevent them from getting trucks into that area.
Put that on there just to.
Yeah, would you put that on there, Leanne? One of the things we came up with is that they park only in the parking area.
The designated areas.
Because that's not what you've designated here.
That's okay, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it, that should cover. You know, good understandings of what will be going on and how to do it, make good neighbors and helps.
Yeah, planning on getting their contact information so we can figure things out together.
I'm, I'm still concerned that the owners aren't here, but, um.
Is, is some, is me getting them on the phone like something that can happen?
I'd rather, I'd rather see them in person.
Okay, sorry, yeah.
That's just me, so.
And Eric, just so I understand, when you say the owner, you probably prefer to have the business owner, not the property owner, who might better understand?
Right.
Right, the business owner.
Nothing against.
No, I understand.
Representative here, but, um.
Yeah, I'm the only one in town, I guess.
Is it a local company now?
I, no, they're not really local, no.
Do you know why they weren't willing to have anybody here?
Well, I told, I actually called them, them this morning, cause I, they were supposed to be here and he said he couldn't make it. He was on the road. I think he had some business to take care of, so.
I, I would assume they were pretty busy, busy south of us, given the, you know, the storm.
Seems like that's primarily what they do is if there's a storm, it's a staging area for right, to pick up the trucks, so they're not parked all over the place.
Exactly, yeah.
Great access to ninety-three and one forty, so they can go east, west and up.
Walmart might yell at them for using their parking lot or something.
There's an Enviro, uh, Arbor Solutions based in Florida, so.
I'm, yeah, I guess we know what the, um, you can read back what the things were and then. Yeah, if you could.
So the conditions are, um, have to be ADA compliant parking. Uh, no repairs onsite, no processing or storage of material. Uh, main, maintain the office for use of the employees. Uh, meet all locals and state permit requirements. Um, no fuel storage. No oil or fuel storage. Let's see, uh, fencing of the dumpster. And parking only in the designated areas per the plan submitted on February twenty twenty-four and no change to the current lighting plan.
Or signage, add signage.
Put it all.
Right, well, signage is under the permits. Local, all local and state permits are required.
All right. Okay. Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to, um, approve with, uh, exceptions that were just read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right. Thanks.
Well, thank you guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mind if, uh, we take a two-minute break for the, uh, the nets?
I don't mind.
Okay. Thank you.
Open road collectibles.
That was, um, they did like. All cars, I cast cars.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, I actually bought my dad a, um, level fifty-seven Chevy there for Christmas.
I do remember it, it's kinda like stuff like that.
Kinda weird, like it says auto dealership, but it's like, it was retail space. It was auto dealership, but there's. One, two hundred and fifty.
How many parking spaces do they want to have for that?
What are we leaving in here for her? What do we?
Uh, you have to have a handicap space for every twenty-five spaces.
Yeah, there's regulation in here.
What do we want to leave in here for her? What, what, what are we gonna do?
All of the, we gotta do the minutes.
Yeah.
To just see.
Taking a bird out.
Oh, that's Mike's.
I know, Leanne, we were keeping something for you.
The last case.
We're just gonna keep the mic stuff so that the former Mike's auto, so that we can, we don't, don't print it out again.
Yeah, but I don't know.
It's a.
Oh, I gave it back to you, didn't I?
Yeah.
Okay, go on. We're just taking a short break. Till Nate can come back.
This is good. Good neighbors.
I'm back, I have another meeting to go to.
You do? Are you in the school, Marshall Community? God bless you. That one goes like this.
It's awkward.
Hey. Okay. Okay. If you've never fired a twenty-two mag before.
All right, we're ready for the minutes. Thank you.
Okay, right, big, huge difference.
All right, uh, moving right along, we have quite a few minutes here. We have the minutes on, uh, December twelfth. Uh, could you answer?
Maybe they can go downstairs.
Yeah. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've got three sets of minutes. Everybody had a chance to review all of them? December twelfth, nineteenth, and January thirtieth. We've all had them for.
Giving the minutes, yeah.
Moving up to thirtieth.
Anybody have any corrections or comments?
I guess probably instead of putting the FD, said that will not require sprinkler system to say that it was, um, mentioned or, or stated that. So they didn't actually come in here and say it, right? So I, I, or the twelfth, it almost sounds like they were here and the fire department stated that. Yeah, that maybe that they, um, it was stated that or something to. Yeah, that maybe that they, it was stated that or something to that effect.
Yeah, I, I believe I stated that. And so that may be why the discussion followed.
Well, it got you right after that.
Yeah.
Observing that it was planned as parking spaces.
So which put, if somebody said it or if it was mentioned that some, so it doesn't look like the fire department came in here and said it. Does it say? I don't know.
Corrected, did you just think there's no requirement of a, for a sprinkler system?
If I interpret it right, that John's saying it should read, it was mentioned that sprinklers are not required. The fire department didn't make a statement that they're not required.
Yeah, so it's.
Okay.
I mentioned that it doesn't need to be sprinkled because it's two units and the comment about this, you know, so that's, that's all me, I guess. Yeah.
I would say Nate said. Nate mentioned that no, no sprinkler system is required. Or in landry only.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of Tuesday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-three as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is December nineteenth. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of December nineteenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Four pages just to get through, reading the amendment or the warrant article. The one sort of thing. Nate did a real good job speaking in boxes.
When are you looking at?
The thirtieth.
Thirty.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So on the bottom of page four, I mentioned that did not guarantee twenty-five percent assisted living. And I also mentioned that nor fifty-five, that all they had to do was have handicap accessible apartments.
They motion, what did you say, what we done?
So on number four at the bottom.
Page four?
Yeah, I had mentioned that they did not need to have assisted living, nor did they have to have fifty-five years or older that they just had to have. The twenty-five percent have to be handicapped accessible. There's no actual requirement for assisted living or fifty-five years or older that guarantees that.
Or that they fill those units with handicapped people?
No, it does not state that. I state that they have to be constructed handicapped. They don't have to be filled with them.
Right, yeah.
So you want something added there?
Yeah. There is no guarantee.
Let me just, I, I just mean to know, make sure I have it right, John, because I'm gonna give it to, to Sue. So the way it is written, it is not guaranteed twenty-five percent assisted living, nor is it guaranteed twenty-five percent will be residential fifty-five or older. They just have to have twenty-five percent handicapped.
Handicapped accessible.
Accessible.
Not occupied. Yeah, the units have to be handicapped.
Is that, that sufficient?
Yeah.
Mine's just a nitpicky thing, but in the future, when someone reads these. So on page four, the bottom paragraph, it says, John explained. It should be John Bernard explained.
I don't know, where are you?
Page four.
Yeah.
Bottom paragraph.
So I asked John to explain.
Yeah.
John Bernard to explain.
So wherever it says John, J O H N, it should be John Bernard because it's mentioned several times throughout the minutes. And unless John's having a, John Scalen's having a conversation with himself.
Loud, yeah, so Sue will hear you say that on the video, so we have someone, she's a little new doing the minutes, so.
It's in here a lot.
Nice job. Nice jobs. Good job.
There's a lot of stuff in here.
Well, just John, John.
Right, first and last names.
I know he's J O N, J O H N, but nobody else knows.
Right.
Well, sometimes it says John Bernard and then sometimes it doesn't.
Not many places was paid.
Or Mr. Bernard.
I will have it correct all the Johns to first and last name.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a nitpicky thing, but.
No, I think that's, that's important.
We read it, we understand, but anyone else would be.
Twenty years from now, no one will know who John is.
I'll make a motion to accept these as corrected.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have two people online that won't speak.
All right, we have two people online. Do you have any questions? Comments?
Eddie and Dee.
Okay, seeing none? I'll make a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I go to my next meeting.
Have a nice day.
So your next meeting is
Twenty-seventh.
The twenty-seventh, and you will only have five forty-nine on your agenda. So everybody has their information, so I will probably just send an email with the new agenda. It's really in the minutes. Is that okay? Oh, I guess I can mail, I'll mail Tom and John. You're okay?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm quick. So.
Twenty-seventh, what did I say, twenty-ninth, I meant the twenty-seventh? Oh.
So are they filing a new site plan or an amended site plan?
I mean, it's amended site plan.
So the only amendments that they're making are the ones that they submitted.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, everything else that's on the site plan is still valid, let's say amended.
On the old site plan, you mean?
Yeah.
We can't say that. I'm not gonna agree to that.
It's, no, it says right on there, it, the application, it's amendment to that existing site.
We have an adjournment. My errand.
Well, it'd be nice to have them show up with the proper stuff and so they don't get, like ping pong it for another year.
Have a nice time at the school, buddy.
You want to?
No, I'm good. I wanna go home and.
Call me, you won't have birthday. I'm putting, look, look at me, I'm putting my hand in my. I'm, I'm all.
That's the school, reach it into your pocket.
Look at that, see that? That's funny.